Johnson?
Yes.
Cifuentes?
Here.
Olivas?
Here.
Arroyo? Absent? Lache?
Here.
Okay, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on nation under God, in the peaceful, liberty, and justice of our law.
Alrighty, so, on to public comments. So we would have had to have signed up before seven o'clock to speak. We ask that you respect the three-minute time limit. We ask that you keep the confidentiality of our students and staff confidential. Please, um, keep your comments appropriate. And there have been some questions as to why the board doesn't respond to public comments. We just do not. That is a guideline that we have always followed forever. So, anyway, so, and that's how the other school boards do it as well. So Christina Leon.
My name is Christina Leon. I am here today as I was made aware by a fellow Gates parent that Principal Fatima Vallesteros dragged a child across the pavement and injured his back. She continues being the principal at Gates. Fatima Vallesteros failed to protect this child. The district failed to protect this child by placing Fatima Vallesteros in a position of power where she, as an educator, failed to provide a safety environment for special needs student. I am distraught as to how she is allowed to remain at Gates with the child she perpetrated such abuse to. My daughter attends Gates and is in the SLC program. As a parent, my daughter's safety is my highest concern as she is non-verbal and cannot advocate for herself. Since I was made aware of such incident, I have removed my daughter from school by keeping her at home. And I advise that any parent that does not feel their child is safe at Gates School to do the same. I do not feel that my daughter is safe under Fatima Vallesteros, and I am petitioning for her removal as she failed her commitment of 25 years of teaching, she failed a special needs child, and she failed the district by tarnishing the image of District 131. I hope my matter and voice is taken serious as I am to serving of a safe educational environment for my daughter and also all the special needs children at Gates to learn in a safe environment. Thank you.
Stacy Foster?
Hi. Well, she basically, you know, stated the concern that I have as well. I guess my only question is going forward, what's gonna happen? Will you guys be able to ensure our kids' safety? I mean, as parents, I'm sure everyone understands that that's priority. And just like Mrs. Leon, I have kept my child out of school because I am scared that this could happen again and maybe even be fatal. So all I really want to know is what is gonna happen going forward? Thank you.
You can move to my personal. I'll address it later.
Communications from the superintendent?
Good evening, Board of Education and parents and community members. Just, the board, again, this is the board's business meeting and school boards across the state don't respond, but I just do want to say to these two parents that spoke that our administrators will follow up with you. If you just give us a moment this evening, we can follow up with some of those questions. Because we did hold parent meetings last week, but I know that the timing for the morning one was tough because it was a late start and I think we didn't think about that. And so parents were trying to get here while they were dropping their kiddos off because it was a little late. So if you, since you're already here, they can talk to you tonight. So if you hang around, I do not anticipate this will be long and we'll get people to talk to you. So, thank you. Okay, so our first item is our student board member report. And so we're going to, at this time, bring our student board member up for a report on East High School tonight.
Good evening, board members. As December begins, I am honored to share the accomplishments and events that have shaped our school community over the past month. November was a month of growth, service, and unity. To begin, I would like to express my excitement in knowing that our school body continues to grow in size. Since the start of the school year, we have gained over 200 new Tomcats. This large number has brought us classmates from around the world. Students from Syria, Afghanistan, Nigeria, and various parts of Central and South America have enriched our East Aurora culture. To support these new Tomcats, our student ambassadors have been working tirelessly and mentoring approximately 50 students. These efforts have served as an invitation to our new students to adjust to their environment while feeling supported and connected in their transition to East Aurora. This past month, the winter sports season has begun. Basketball, wrestling, cheer, and chess teams prepared with hard work and are ready to represent East Aurora with dignity and determination. Our theater program also had a productive month after delivering three incredible performances of skeleton stories. Their creativity, talents, and dedication were boldly showcased. Moving on, the National Honor Society celebrated the induction of 60 new members. These Tomcats were recognized for their achievements of leadership, scholarship, and service. Additionally, our Student Athletic Society has decided to continue their community service with elderly residents on early Saturday mornings by raking their leaves and shoveling snow in the coming months. This past month, the FAFSA application has become available for seniors. Thankfully, East Aurora has remained loyal to their continued support for their seniors and families by hosting FAFSA night. These sessions are helping ensure that every student is prepared and has received essential assistance with the financial aid process. Another highlight that cannot go without mention was the annual tomahawk turkey trot. The citywide anticipated event took place on November 23rd where 1,170 participants came together to run and rock a 5K race. This incredible event raised more than $50,000 for the Aurora East Education Foundation and the A+ Foundation for West Aurora, which directly supports educational opportunities for our city students. Beyond the impressive numbers, the turkey trot brought our community together in the celebration of health, unity, and school pride. Looking ahead, December promises to be a month of celebration and connection. On December 13th, the Spanish Honor Society is hosting a Noche Latina dance that will bring students together for an evening of culture indulgence. Two days later, the Posas event will take place. This tradition has honored our community with the involvement of several student organizations celebrating Christmas and winter break activities. These events are a testament to the diversity and togetherness of East Aurora. As the semester draws to a close, I want to express my gratitude to our teachers, supporting staff, and administrators for their unwavering commitment to our students. Your support is what makes East Aurora such a special, special place to learn and grow. Thank you for your time.
Okay, I have district updates. And I want to start off this evening with the help of our PR officer, Marissa Yelenowski, and giving some very, very important MVP awards. So, um, we have five individuals that we would like to say thank you, special thanks to, two of which I believe are here this evening. And so I'm going to call them to the front as I talk about each of them independently. So first, representing, as it should be, our SROs, our School Resource Officers, who is a part of our partnership with Aurora Police Department, I have Officer Jason Woosley. Would you come down to the front and be recognized? As he's coming up, I'll share. We, um, had a, a, a cer- a special circumstance about a week and a half ago, and it gave us an opportunity to just have a real reason to say thank you to our SROs in the district. And so East High has two SROs, Officer Woosley and Officer Mark Kidd. And we have two newer SROs that work with all of our middle schools. And I believe Cowherd is Officer Lemansky and Officer Contreras is both Simmons and Waldo. And they could not be with us this evening, but just let me take a moment to share this with the board and the community. This is probably one of the most difficult police assignments that exists in the nation. It is really hard because educators, teachers, administrators, parents, students, we live within the realm of education and our officers, our first responders in district, they live within the world of law enforcement. And to try to marry the two is often so challenging, but our SROs are so good with us and they try to make sure that we understand exactly what it is that we need to do and how to engage and operate with their department. And so oftentimes in emergencies, they have to calm us down because we really do take things a lot more serious than they do. And so, but I know that they're used to running, the police run totally different than we do in education. And I say that because that's the reality. But our SROs really do a fabulous job in balancing that act and working between the two. And so I know I can speak on behalf of all of our school leaders and saying thank you, thank you, thank you for the work that they do. And oftentimes in most districts, it is a thankless job. And so we just wanted to represent them. And so thank you, Officer Woosley, for being here. You are our longest sitting SRO in the district over all of the newbies. So thank you for bringing them on board and training them up. This is year six for you? Year six, yes. So we just want to say thank you tonight and if our board wants to take a picture with our officer, thank you. Yay, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Another thing, as he's walking back, is the relationship piece. And that's why I should have written this down. Our, our SROs really go above and beyond to build relationships with students. So oftentimes they get lots of information that we don't get because they have taken the time to build relationships. So again, kudos to our team. We are really blessed and fortunate to have such a great SRO team. And one other MVP award, and so anytime there is a change in our school day on the fly, anytime the weather's bad, anytime, um, something happens, natural disasters or local disasters, or the lights go out, or the plumbing is out, we have to make immediate shifts. And we always think, oh my goodness, it's our district administrators. And, you know, it's our principals that have to carry the brunt of that. And that is not actually the reality. I will tell you, one person, she doesn't know she's getting the MVP award tonight, so I will call up to the, um, to the front, Gladys DeLucio, our Director of Transportation, who is our MVP all the time. Whoops, sorry, here you go. She is the one who, single-handedly, no matter what we call Gladys about, she says, it's okay, I'll take care of it. She juggles like multiple bus companies, hundreds of bus routes, and she has done this for years for us. And so when we had to go through our fast dismissal the other day, whenever we say we need the buses, don't worry, I'll contact the drivers, she delivers 100% of the time. And so we just want to take this opportunity to say thank you and kudos to you. You and your department are really our MVPs truly and rock stars. You never let us down. So thank you so much. Yay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you always. Yeah, I was trying to steal her from us too. Okay, one other announcement is that our staff holiday party, which the Board of Education is invited to, don't forget, is December 6th, so it's Friday at 4:30 PM. So Lisa should have given you the flyer for that, but we just want to remind you of that. We're looking forward to an opportunity to celebrate and say thank you to our staff for a wonderful first semester.
What time again?
Um, 4:30, starts at 4:30 PM.
And where?
Um, it's at the Embassy, Embassy Suites, yes. Embassy, yep, yep. Um, okay, so before we move on to the next item, um, the board votes, I just want to speak to this, um, this particular action item before the vote. And, and I want to say that we met internally in the district and thought long and hard on the partnership for our owner's representative position, our general construction kind of management position for what we hope to be is the, the district's, um, one of the huge proud points, pride, points of pride for, um, the next two years. And that will be the construction and creation of the district's Career and Technical Center. It has been a journey that is, we've been on for probably at least the last three years in the planning phases. And we want to make sure that this, um, comes to fruition timely, most importantly, but certainly having everything that we need. And so to do that, we began to look at several, um, companies that could provide these services. But I will tell you, the company that we're recommending this evening has been in business between 40 and 50 years, I believe. And not only that, but the experience and the projects that they bring to the table is going to serve as invaluable to us. They have about 20 projects that we were able to discuss that are aviation mechanics project. And as you know, our Career Tech Center will have one of the only, will be one of the only public schools that has an aviation mechanics program in the state. And so their expertise at doing this, not only in building schools with STEM labs and those projects, but they've actually done many projects with Midway Airport Expansion, O'Hare Airport Expansion. They've done the Aviation Mechanics Center at Midway for American Airlines, for United Airlines. And so we know when we can't answer those questions because we don't have that as an expertise, this company would. We also celebrate the fact that they have done many other projects for the Chicago Department of Aviation. They also have been involved in 20-plus projects that we could see most recently for healthcare, triage, and health labs as we begin to build facilities for our students to earn their nursing license, their LPN credentials. And so they build labs consistently for University of Illinois Chicago, Rush Copley in Chicago, and the Chicago Allied Health Centers. We have seen that they've done projects for SIM labs, simulator labs, and CAD lab projects. I've just described our entire Career Tech Center. And so having had the experience to know not just what the law says and the school code says about where and when to put lab stations and how far apart to put lab stations, but actually knowing what will work best in the functionality on the outside to make sure that what the board builds is for years to come, what is needed and what is going to be best for our programming and our students to maximize those resources. And so I just wanted to say that publicly as we have looked to smaller entities to be able to partner with us and be an owner's rep. And we have some future project next summer that we are going to be bringing to you at the next B&amp;G meeting to be able to ask for a partnership of an owner's rep for that. But this is a special project that really required some expertise. So, Madam President, without any further ado, item C.
Motion to approve the construction management agreement with FA passion for the East Aurora Career Technical Center.
I thought we're pulling this item.
Okay, I thought you had.
No, I, no, I make sure, I thought we're pulling, not pulling it now, so we're not pulling it now.
Well.
It's going forward?
Did you guys not speak?
No, no, I did talk.
No prior conversation today. I just, I thought we're pulling it.
Yeah, no.
I talked to Annette, I talked to you, but I didn't know you talked separately. I didn't talk to either one.
I called her and I told her, I asked her to speak to that tonight.
Okay. No, my answer was, my question was satisfactorily answered. We can move forward then, yeah. I just didn't know, I talked to you and I talked to her, but I know you two had talked to each other before you talked to me.
Because when she told me all the reasons behind it, I thought, okay, well, it's not a bad idea.
I have no objection, just this, that, I feel that.
There's a motion on the same.
This proposal made months ago, the board's made of this word this months ago. We had a chance to get a minority-owned business, a woman-owned business, but I did not know her qualifications at the time. Um, it just caught me off guard, that's all. And, um, she was to give a presentation tonight, then we canceled tonight's meeting. Now she's on next month's committee agenda, but then, uh, now we're voting on someone else tonight. I was just curious. That's all, my concerns.
Got it. Nope. Yeah, no, I, I called Annette back so that she, I closed the loop on our conversation.
It just, yeah, just, it all happened at once.
We did talk.
You got your questions answered in there?
Mostly, mostly, but it just, it just caught me off guard that. This was months ago, presentation, oh, next month, next month, next month. Then next month is here and we canceled the meeting. So now it's next month and I'm picking another company tonight. That's, that's all my concern was. And, you know, I, I just feel bad that the top, her top two engineers are East High grads that want to work on this project and that we're not being picked tonight. But I have no problems moving forward. You did answer my questions, but.
Okay.
Maybe we should hold it. I mean, it sounds like you got a legitimate, I mean, did we go RFQ or what did we do for this?
No, so you want me to answer that? So, no, this is for services. So what we do is what we've always done for services, which is to analyze and look at different companies and to see what their proposals can provide, what level of expertise, what their experience is. And so, um, we did look not just at the company that Mr. Arroyo is speaking of, but we did look at several other companies as a group inside and then called them to have a conversation specifically about their past projects that connect to this project so that we know that going into this, they have the expertise. And so we, I did talk to Mr. Arroyo about another project that would be more aligned to that expertise of that company that, um, that we looked at. So that's what we talked about earlier. He just did not know that I followed up with Ms. Johnson.
I mean, I think professional services, I know it's a carve-out, but I do think we should bid it out, you know, just put it out and, you know, out there for, for the whole public to do it. That's my opinion.
Well, the other, are there other companies available, uh, that are qualified to bid on this project? Has it been reviewed?
Yep, so the bidding, so, and again, I can look to the attorney, but typically like for architect services, for those services, it's an RFQ, so it's not a.
No, no, I understand the services, yeah.
So, yeah.
Who is best qualified and plus falls in line with the state, state standards, but.
Yep. So, yes, because of that, because of the nature of the services, yeah.
As I said, Dr. Arroyo earlier, like, this company's top two engineers are East Aurora grads. And I feel bad, like, we're telling East Aurora kids, go out there and be the best person you can. You're not welcome here at East Aurora. Don't apply here.
You know, that's not the message that's being sent though, Mr. Arroyo.
That's, but.
What we're saying is, there was a very aggressive, I'm speaking.
Oh, go ahead, please.
Very aggressive timeline with this. We want to keep things, you know, there's a lot of things that have to happen to make this, this project work in the timeframe that the board put forward to the administration. We're not saying that this company cannot be entertained for future projects at the district. There's always projects at East Aurora. But this particular project is, it is on the tracks already.
Right. If you recall.
Take a step back, this puts the whole schedule of the career center back. So if the board is okay with that, then that's fine, but it, that's a big step.
And how many months ago did I send you this project, this contractor?
You said it was.
How many months ago did I send you this contractor's name? Months ago. And all of a sudden we pick a local person who's connected politically.
Right. No, no, it was sent to, I think, myself and Steve, I think, and.
And, and other committee members also. But it's okay, it's okay.
I was accepting responsibility.
I will, I will call the question now.
Okay. Okay, so, um.
So moved.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
Okay, all right. Secretary Colerole?
Schubert?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Arroyo?
No.
Cifuentes?
Yes.
Lache?
No.
Alrighty, so, okay, and now are you done with your report?
Yeah, I think the next one is just for the board to be able to, because you vote on the calendar initially and then when we make changes, we just want to make sure we have consensus. So it's not a motion, but just if everybody's okay with those dates, if they clear your calendar, we just want to take consensus. So that would be moving January 6th to the 13th and moving, and because that's the week before the 20th, moving the board meeting slated for the 21st, because that would be a Tuesday night, to Monday, the 27th. If that's, we just want to take consensus. Does that work for each of you? Mr. Cifuentes, yes?
That'll work.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Arroyo, is that good for you?
Monday, 27th for next school board meeting?
Um, well, no, we would have one on the 13th and one on the 27th.
Okay.
So we'd still have two. Okay, I think we're good, Lisa. That concludes my report. Thank you.
All right. Motion to approve the following consent agenda as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Secretary Colerole?
Schubert?
Yes.
Cifuentes?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Arroyo?
Yes.
Lache?
Yes.
Well, our finance committee won't be on the 6th, correct? Okay. All right, so, uh, as to finance, our next, uh, meeting will be Monday, the 13th here at the Service Center. Other than that, there's no other action items, so on to curriculum and programs with Mr. Cifuentes.
Good evening, everyone. The Curriculum and Programs Committee met on Monday, November 18th at 6:00 PM here at the Administrative Center. We did have two improvement plans that were presented by, uh, two schools, so Gonzalez Child Center and Cowherd Middle School. Principal Stephanie Steinbrenner and Assistant Principal Lana Gundy shared the 2023 summary along with goals for the current school year. Some of the accomplishments are that 77% of preschool students grew one or more developmental levels on the desired results developmental profile in language and literacy development. 81.3% of K through 5 students met or exceeded growth in the, uh, NWEA MAP reading English. And 75% of K-5 students met or exceeded growth on NWEA MAP, um, Spanish. Along with 70% of K-5 students met or exceeded expected growth on NWEA MAP math. Goals that they're gonna, um, focus on for the current school year are to reduce the office, office discipline referrals by 10%, maintain a daily average of attendance of 95%, and, um, 85% of K-5 adventure students will have met their growth metrics in MAP reading and, uh, 75% in MAP math. Principal, uh, Jacqueline Gibson, along with Assistant Principal, um, Anna Heimberger and Veronica Zamora, and Dean Derek Smith also presented on behalf of Cowherd. They shared that 60% of eighth grade students achieved growth on MAP reading. 10 students attained proficiency based on the access exit criteria, and they also achieved commendable status as reported by ISB. Goals for the current school year for Cowherd are that they are going to increase or try to maintain a attendance level at 95% in certain subgroups. 90% of students will have one or less referrals. And 20% of CMS students will meet or exceed growth as measured by the Spring Eye Ready Diagnostic. We also had a presentation, uh, from Principal Jennifer Mitchell and Assistant Principal Jackie Stone on some of the updates to the high school course catalog, expanding offerings, which include Electrical Systems 1 and 2, Cybersecurity, PC Repair, Law Enforcement 1 and 2. Um, Dr. Norrell also presented on the pilot program for the Resilience Education Center that will take place on December 14th, which will offer workshop or activities for birth to 3 and pre-K to 12th grade, um, families. Uh, families are encouraged to sign up. And then, um, Dr. Norrell also explained that we will start the interim counseling service plan with, uh, current EA staff first. Uh, we also had two updates for disposal of outdated elementary materials, and those, uh, resolutions are up here in just one second. The attendance was at 93.47 through November 14th and enrollment, um, at 12,329 students. Any questions on anything so far?
No.
If not, we'll move on to the action item on the first one. 7. B. Point 1, motion to approve the resolution for disposal of outdated elementary FLESS curricular materials.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Secretary Colerole?
Cifuentes?
Yes.
Arroyo?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Gillespie? Yes.
Lache?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
All right, the next action item is also for um, outdated materials, uh, seven point B point two. Motion to approve the resolution for disposal of outdated elementary connect and listos materials.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Secretary Colerole?
Gillespie?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Cifuentes?
Yes.
Arroyo?
Yes.
Lache?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
All right, the next curriculum and programs committee will meet on Monday, December sixteenth here at six PM at the administrative center, and that concludes my report.
Alrighty, building some grounds with Mr. Schubert.
Uh, there's no report this evening. Um, our next meeting is January thirteenth here at the administrative center and there's no action items.
Okay. Alrighty, motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing student discipline and the employment and performance compensation dismissal of a specific employee plus any legal matters.
So moved.
Second.
Secretary Colerole?
Lache?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Cifuentes?
Yes.
Arroyo?
Yes.
That's true.
Huge problem.
Motion to reconvene from executive session.
So moved. Second?
And we're back. Sorry. Secretary, call the roll.
Olivas?
Yes.
Cefuentes?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Arroyo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lachey?
Yes.
Now we still, we ready for Bruce?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, the first, be resolved that this Board of Education, after having considered the evidence presented by the hearing officer, hereby upholds a recommendation for expulsion of student number 697458604 of Easteror Extension Campus effective December 3, 2024, for the remainder of the 2024-2025 school year to include summer school 2025 and the 2025-2026 school year to include summer school of 2026. At the completion of the expulsion period, student number 697458604 will return to the Extension Campus for the 2026-2027 school year on December 4, 2026. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the parents of said student and duly recorded in the official minutes of this Board of Education, School District 131, dated the second day of December 2024.
Okay. Motion to approve the resolution for student number 697458604.
So moved.
Second.
Secretary, call the roll.
Arroyo? Arroyo?
Yeah.
Lachey?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Schubert? Schubert?
Yes.
Cefuentes?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Be a resolved that this board of education after having considered the evidence presented by the hearing officer, hereby upholds a recommendation for expulsion of student number five eight three two three four nine zero seven of Easter or extension campus effective December third, twenty twenty four for the remainder of the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year to include summer school twenty twenty five and the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year until December second. At the completion of the expulsion period, student number five eight three two three four nine zero seven will return to the extension campus for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year on December third, twenty twenty five. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the parents of said student and duly recorded in the official minutes of this board of education school district one thirty one dated this third day of December, twenty twenty four.
Motion to approve the resolution for student number five eight three two three four nine oh seven.
So moved.
Second.
Secretary call the roll.
Cefuentes?
Yes.
Arroyo?
Yeah.
Olivas?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Lache?
Yes.
Be a resolved that this board of education after considered the evidence presented by the hearing officer hereby upholds a recommendation for expulsion of student number eight one eight two one six one four five of Easter or high school effective December third, twenty twenty four for the remainder of the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year to include summer school twenty twenty five and the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year until December second. At the completion of the expulsion period, student number five eight three two three four nine zero seven will return to the extension campus for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year on December third, twenty twenty five. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the parents of said student and duly recorded in the official minutes of this board of education school district one thirty one dated this third day of December, twenty twenty four.
Okay. Motion to approve the resolution for student number eight one eight two one six one four five.
So moved.
Second.
Secretary call the roll.
Lache?
Yes.
Uh, Arroyo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Cefuentes?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Be a resolved that this board of education after having considered the evidence presented by the hearing officer hereby upholds a recommendation in lieu of expulsion for alternate placement Illinois virtual school for student number five two one nine nine zero three two nine of Easter or high school effective December third, twenty twenty four from December of the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year to December of the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year. Should student fail to attend the alternative educational setting, the expulsion will be immediately enacted for the remainder of the expulsion term without further action by the board of education. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the parents of said student and duly recorded in the official minutes of this board of education school district one thirty one dated this is after correct date eighteenth day of November? So dated this, um, today, December second, twenty twenty four.
Date? No, he just, did you hear what Bruce said? We changed it?
Okay.
Dates are out.
Okay. We're okay on that?
Yep.
I think we'll need to, we'll need to type them.
We're fine? Okay. Motion to approve the resolution for student number five two one nine nine zero three two nine.
So moved.
Second.
Secretary call the roll.
Olivas?
Yes.
Cefuentes?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Arroyo?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lache?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve the dismissal of an administrator.
So moved.
Secretary call the roll.
Cefuentes?
Yes.
Arroyo?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Lache?
Yes. We don't have to list who the person is.
Director now, do we need to list who the person is?
Yes, we need to, um, leave the name.
Recall that emotion.
Yeah, sorry.
What is her name?
I'll take care of it.
Okay, let's recall the motion. Motion to approve the dismissal of an administrator, Kalen?
Wilson.
Kalen Wilson.
So moved. Second.
Secretary call the roll.
Cefuentes?
Yes.
Arroyo?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Lache?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Secretary call the roll.
Schubert?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Cefuentes?
Yes.
Arroyo? Olivas?
Yes.
Lache?
Yes.
To ask you about this one thing here.